To order, would you join me for the flag salute, please? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here. And we have a couple or three proclamations. The first one is National Police Week, May fifteenth through May twenty-first, 2023. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May fifteenth as National Police Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardian of life and property, defenders of the individual rights of the free people, soldiers of war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas it is known that every two days, an American police officer dies in the line of duty. Our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all police officers everywhere. Whereas the City of Fortuna desires to honor the value, valor, service, and dedication of our police officers. And now therefore, I Tammy Trent, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, proclaim the week of May fifteenth to May twenty-first, 2023, to be National Police Week and call upon the citizens to give special honor and sincere appreciation to the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I further call upon our citizens to make every effort to express our gratitude to the men and women who make it possible for us to leave our homes and families in safety each day and return knowing that they are protected by the people willing to sacrifice their lives, if necessary, to guard our loved ones and property. And government against all who would violate the laws. Signed this day, first day of May, at the City of Fortuna. And Chief is going to accept this honor.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Trent, Honorable City Council. Thank you very much for this honor and for recognizing National Police Week. It is also truly an honor to be standing here before you tonight as a representative of the brave men and women that are serving as law enforcement officers across the country. Every day, these dedicated professionals put their lives on the line to serve and protect our communities, and they do so with commitment, courage, and an unwavering sense of duty. We owe them a debt of gratitude that can never be fully repaid. This proclamation tonight serves as a reminder of the sacrifices made by our officers and their families, and also is a symbol of appreciation and the support that we enjoy here in our community for the vital and important work that we do within our communities each and every day. On behalf of all those who have dedicated their lives to serving as law enforcement officers, I would like to express our sincere thank you for this honor and assure you that we will continue to work tirelessly in the community to keep our cities safe and secure. Above else, above all else, we really appreciate the recognition for our efforts. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and Council, for the recognition. And I wanted to let everyone know that during National Police Week, our department personnel wear a band across the badge, and that is a sign of respect and tribute to those that have made the ultimate sacrifice in law enforcement. It's an honor and a privilege to be amongst the officers that serve our community. And speaking for myself and my fellow officers, we are very grateful for the community we live in and the support we have of our council and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add that Fortuna lost a police officer, May twelfth, 1967. He was killed in the line of duty, I believe hit by a car while doing a traffic stop. So always keep him in your hearts, and we always remember him, especially this week. We are honoring him. Our next one, our next proclamation will be the National Bike Month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. National Bike Month is May 2023. Whereas bicycle travel is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion and noise, increase physical activity, and improve public health. Whereas bicycling is part of the solution for addressing transportation needs, limiting impacts of infrastructure, as well as conservation of energy. Whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, reduced vehicle commuting, parking, and healthcare costs, increased employee productivity, and there exists a strong relationship between the City of Fortuna and the Fortuna Elementary School District to create safe routes to schools. Whereas a bike park, pump track, and bike skills course has been built within the City of Fortuna at Newburgh Park. Whereas the City of Fortuna is involved in planning and building additional bike lanes and trail infrastructure, which would increase bicycle commuting and recreation opportunities for Fortuna residents. Whereas the City of Fortuna has received statewide recognition for extending the school zone and reducing the speed limit to benefit all schools. Whereas the month of May is National Bike Month, which promotes the bicycle as a means of transportation and recreation. And May is also Clean Air Month, which promotes air quality. Whereas the City of Fortuna is hosting a kids' bike rodeo event at Newburgh Park on Saturday, May thirteenth. Whereas Bike Month Humboldt features a number of cycling events for all riders of all ages and skill to enjoy throughout the month at various locations. Now therefore, Tammy Trent, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, does hereby claim May 2023 as National Bike Month throughout Fortuna and urge all citizens to support and participate in activities that contribute to the health of the community and the environment. Signed this first day of May 2023, City of Fortuna, Tammy Trent, Mayor.
And this one is being accepted by Fortuna Middle School ASB officers.
Thank you very much. Hello, Major Trent, Fortuna City Council members and audience. My name is Yuvia, and I am the ASB Secretary. Bike to School Day started in 1997 as a way to bring awareness to the need for safe ways for people in the community to bike or walk to work or school. It also brings awareness to the importance of exercise. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Liz, a publicist from ASB, and a couple healthy habits that will, is regular physical activity that will, that also can create healthy habits that will last a lifetime and also that it's just, it just can help us build strong bodies to participate in activities that, that like sports and physical activity. Thank you.
My name is Sarah. I'm one of the co-presidents for ASB. When families bike, walk, or roll to school, it helps reduce pollution emitted by cars and buses. Cars and buses emit lots of pollutants like nitrogen oxidides and dust and smoke. Walking and biking to school helps create a cleaner environment. Bike, walk, or roll to school benefits the community because it will limit the amount of cars on the road, which decreases unhealthy air pollution, car accidents, and traffic. This also helps bring people all over the community together and reduces costs for the families and community in school district.
Hello, my name is Jackie, and I am the ASB event coordinator. Students will earn prizes for participating by walking, riding, or rolling to school. If they ride the bus or their families bring them to school, they can still participate by walking the track or arriving, when arriving to school. The cafeteria will be providing healthy breakfast options for those who participate. Also, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate Fortuna Middle School coming to accept this award every year.
Thank you, Mrs. Ravelis, for being here with your students.
Thank you.
And the last proclamation is Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
In recognition of the 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, April 30th through May 6th, 2023. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, Tammy Trent, Mayor of the City of Fortuna, does recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerks, Siana Emmons and Buffy Gray, and to all the Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to communities they serve. Signed this first day of May 2023 at the City of Fortuna, State of California.
I'll say a brief word. Honorable Mayor Trent and Council, I, it's an honor to live in this community and serve the public. I take a lot of pride in being the liaison between the public and the electeds. And as part of this recognition, I just want to say a big thank you to our Deputy City Clerk, Buffy Gray. You don't normally see her at these meetings, but she does a lot of the heavy lifting behind the scenes to make sure that our public meetings go smoothly. So I just want to say thank you to her and thank you to this council, and I appreciate the recognition.
I will add that we cannot ask for a better, two better clerks. I don't think we could possibly get anything better than what we have, and thank you for all you do. Our next item is oral public, or oral comments from the public. Anybody in the public that would like to say anything that's not on the agenda?
Good evening again. Good evening again, Mayor Trent, Honorable City Council. I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank city staff and yourselves as a city council and members of the public for supporting our K-9 fundraiser that occurred on Friday evening. So it was, it was a huge success. We, you know, enjoyed some time working together and visiting and socializing, and overall, the K-9 fundraiser was, was a hit. A huge thanks goes out to Chief Brown, the Fire Department, for the use of his kitchen facility, which was provided at no charge to the Police Department. So it's just really cool, and we were very much appreciative of it. So just a couple of other things. What we did for the fundraiser was a drive-through dinner, but it wasn't your run-of-the-mill, standardized drive-through dinner. It was a homemade lasagna and kind of a full fork course meal that was prepared by our K-9 officer, Dennis Stevens. Very proud of staff. He took the lead on everything. I didn't really have to involve myself at all, other than just showing up. So again, just thank you to everybody involved that helped us out with that, and we'll be looking forward to doing more here in the future.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else like to say anything? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to report of dispersments. And we have four, which include the city council minutes, report of dispersments, oops, I meant consent calendar. Report of dispersments, approval, United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Loan and Grant Assistance Program application to purchase a, is it Tigger? Tiger? Boom mower. And the last one is Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Project Resolution 2023-11. Anybody want to pull any of them? Nope. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We approve Consent Calendar Items A through D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Okay, that passes. Our first line of business, our item of business, is cleanup and outreach service contract with New Direction. Do you have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So I'll be brief. They're included in the staff report, there's also a draft contract. But for the past few years, since 2019, the city contracted with Riverlife Foundation to do outreach, to provide assistance to unhoused people, and also to clean up illegal camps that were around the city and in the waterways and in other areas. The primary, excuse me, over the past year, there really wasn't a lot of work done from November through March. And then on March 13th, Sean Swanson, the founder of Riverlife, passed away, and so there was really no one to provide those services. There's very few other organizations that perform this type of work. One of them, so we took, we looked around, we, to find other organizations, and the only other organization that staff was able to identify were the People of New Directions, owned and operated by John Shelter. Mr. Shelter's here in the, in the black hat in the audience. He currently works with nonprofits and local jurisdictions between McKinleville and Garberville. We did talk to a number of folks that Mr. Shelter works with and received some favorable references from the agencies. On April 4th, the Chief of Police and I both met with Mr. Shelter to talk about their approach to providing these type of services, and we're very pleased with what he provided. He understood a lot of the different types of resources available for people who are unhoused and need resources. He also understood some of the, the resources available in the county for addiction treatment. And Mr. Shelter also brought a, kind of a summary of the products and services that they provide and the things they do that include educating houseless individuals how to be good neighbors, distinctions between sleeping and camping. They help to provide resources and facilities to access those when they're able to and provide peer counseling and healthy, and their desire to see health and, healthy and safe public spaces for everyone to enjoy. So we're pleased that Mr. Shelter is willing to come to the city and do this work. In the past, there was a lot, a lot of this work was really self-directed by Sean Swanson. He would check in when he was going to do a cleanup with our General Services Superintendent. So we had a sense of what was going on and would be able to go out and verify what was happening. But the difference is now our police and general services, they'd really be calling New Directions on, you know, when we locate the site. So the difference is city staff would be locating the site, calling John, and then working collaboratively with New Dimensions. They'd perform the cleanup work, the outreach, notifications, things like that. And so it'd be slightly different, and our idea was to put a contract in place for the next couple of months till the end of the fiscal year, see how that goes, and then consider renewing at the end of the year. But our concern was if we don't stay on top of some of the illegal camps and the cleanup, that things could get a little bit out of control as the weather starts to get nicer. And so it was really important for us to have something in place for the remainder of this fiscal year. So with that, the contract amount that's proposed is $5,000. I don't expect we use all that, but it really is just a, you know, placeholder. There's more money left in the budget that wasn't used last year primarily because there wasn't a lot of work done between November and March. So with that, my recommendation is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with New Directions not to exceed $5,000. And I will point out, Mayor, Mayor Trent pointed out that the dates in the contract, the draft contract were wrong. There was a date from November 21st. So I'll adjust those to reflect the next couple of months, and then if we extend it, we'll bring back, back to the council. And then the other thing that we won't include is organizing volunteer cleanups. That may happen, but it's probably not something that we'll put in the contract. That's not something that we discussed. So with that, I'd be more than willing to have, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know if John, John is here, if you want to ask him any questions as well.
Any questions from council?
I'm curious, how often do we anticipate utilizing them? I mean, are we kind of putting something on the schedule of once a month or every other month or?
Yeah, I'll let the, the chief weigh in. Bob Nat's here too, but it really just depends on, on what's happening. If there's areas in the public space where we see camps that, you know, are illegal or in areas where, you know, especially they're, they're, you know, in the creekside settings where there's potential environmental impacts, we, you know, we call right away. But I don't have a good sense, but my guess is at least a couple of times a month would probably be an average number. Chief, I don't know if you have any more thoughts on the?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, we had some initial meetings, and Bob Nat and I have had an opportunity to talk about this. As far as the PD side is concerned, we think the best way to spearhead this is just to have our POP team keep an ongoing list of problematic areas. So if we're able to identify those when they're, you know, essentially just, you know, coming to, to light, then I think we can deal with them more effectively. But on the city manager's recommendation, I think, you know, somewhere between one to three times a month is what we're looking at, depending on the time of year.
You have a comment? Oh, okay.
One of the items, one of the things that Sean was able to do is meet with the people up their level on where they're at on whether it's in a tent or whatever, and talk to them and find their need. And a lot of times it was transportation. They wanted to go home to wherever that could be. Do they still, is the TAP program still available? And are you in the, to be able to?
Yeah, feel free, John, to come up and?
Okay, Sean, I've worked many jobs with Sean and everything, and, and we're very similar, except for I bring a different aspect. Ours is an employment readiness program for the homeless. So going into live camps is basically where we're focused, to work with the individuals, to actually work with them, compromise with them, get them back to where they need to come from, but most of all, trying to make them feel part of the community. Most of them are pushed outside of the community, and what we want to do is we want to get them as productive community members if they're going to be here. I know none of you guys want to just chase them away. If we can make them productive citizens and community members, that's the best avenue. We've transitioned 192 individuals from tent into housing and employment on our own. We are what you call a social enterprise, which is a business. The money that is provided through this contract will actually be used as seed money to be actually providing you guys with another resource that you guys didn't even probably exist, no existed. That seed money is just like we do in every other city. It gives us a reason to be here, our base pay, and then we look at other avenues where we could be assistance. We usually take on the jobs that nobody has time for or wants to do. These are a lot of house cleanouts. We work for the, the Housing Association in Eureka. We work for Humboldt County Roads, which property borders Fortuna. And we actually currently work a river bar park, which is kind of problematical, and you guys probably know where it's at also, right by the gravel quarry. So we work that area also. So everything is really kind of like connected. One to three times, if you guys are that close, and maybe you don't even need me. I'm visiting Arcata on a daily basis, Eureka on a daily basis, McKinleville on a daily basis. It's not far of a stretch because we're growing. We now have three vehicles. We have multiple different types of trailers, dump trailers. Miller Farms has just given us a dump truck that will be like a 15-yard dumpster on wheels that we now can actually add also, reducing the cost. My idea was to have the chief, and the chief and the city manager was very willing to do is if I don't walk in the trails, then you guys are saving money. And what we want is more bang for the buck. We want to say, okay, this is your problem area, let us go in there and start dealing with it. And usually we have pretty good success without using law enforcement. Law enforcement's my friend. I rely on them, but I want them to know when I call, please come fast. Other than that, it hasn't really happened. Just like Sean's magical touch with the homeless population, I kind of believe we have the same one. The employees that we have all come from the homeless population, and believe it or not, a lot of them are connected. And that gets us over and through the barriers faster than anybody else can. We've already got those connections.
Sounds like a holistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now we'll open public comment. If you'd like to say anything else, you can. Is there, anybody else want to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Madam Mayor, I will move to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract with New Directions not to exceed $5,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none?
Thank you, John.
Can I say one more thing? Thank you for being the first city that I know of that actually budgeted money for homeless cleanups. That means the world to me and gives me that extra drive to work harder for you guys. I want to thank you very much for that thinking.
Well, thank you, and we're looking forward to having you. Our next item of business is Fortuna Business Improvement District Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So this, this item is really a formality. It's, it's a requirement. The business, the Fortuna Business Improvement District was established by the city in 1990 under the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989, which is the Streets and Highway Code, to benefit and promote the city's businesses. Under the Enabling Statute, the council is required to approve an annual report that contains the following information. Any proposed changes within the boundaries of Fbid, the improvements and activities to be paid for in the fiscal year, an estimate of cost of providing the improvements for that fiscal year, the method and basis of levying the assessment, the amount of any surplus or deficit revenues to be carried over from the previous fiscal year, and the amount of any contributions to made, be made from other sources. The annual report, there's a summary of annual, of the annual report in the staff report, and I'll just highlight a few of the items. You know, the really, the big one this year was that in August of 2022, the council directed staff to perform the functions of Fbid in-house and created the department under the city manager to conduct the roles and responsibilities of Fbid. It took a while to get a staff person on board to be the F administrator, and we hired Morgan Dodson on December 5th, 2022. Prior to being hired, the city entered an MOU with the chamber to provide the functions that are normally, that are normally conducted by Fbid. And they provided those annual reports, excuse me, those annual events and the other items, and they, and the chamber completed that work. Some of those included the Al Grey Lighted Parade on December 9th, the Kids' Free Movie on December 10th, the Shop Fortuna for the Holidays in November and December, and the Small and Home-Based Business Marketplace on March 18th. There was also some general business promotion. Business Marketplace on March 18. There was also some general business promotion and advertising that was done. There's a list, I'm not going to read all of those to you, that the Fbid administrator included, but there's a number of those that included establishing a new online presence for Fbid, and then a number of really just the items that were done at a staff level. And one of the most recent ones is doing a logo contest to come up with a new logo. But there's a whole list, a page of items that Morgan has done within the last year. With regard to the budget, the city council approved the budget on, a draft budget on, excuse me, the Fbid Board recommended approval of the city council, and the city council approved the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget of $106,000. The Fbid assessment was expected to generate $63,000 with a city match of $63,000, and the total revenue for last year for Fbid is a total of $126,000. The proceeds from the prior Fbid nonprofit were dispersed to the city in July of 2022 in the amount of $26,261 in deposit in the Fbid fund created by the city. So there is no proposed change of how the assessment would be levied in the next fiscal year, and the assessment would be consistent with the levy and assessments would be collected as set forth in ordinance 2022-756. So with that, that concludes my staff report of the annual report for Fbid, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Morgan's been a great asset. I work with her as on the advisory committee, and she accomplished a lot in the short time she's been with us. So great job on the hire.
Yeah, she has, thank you, Councilmember Mobley. She has a lot of enthusiasm for the position, and she's really, I think, done a great job of really putting herself out there. We were struggling to have, you know, representation from Redwood Creek and Strong Street shopping areas. We will have that soon. We have John Bettini, who we'll be recommending for the Redwood Village seat, and then we have, so we'll have a full board. And I think we're really able to focus now on really the essence of Fbid, those things, decorations of downtown, general business promotion. And I really think Morgan is going to be very creative with how we do these things going forward. So with that, any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody have a public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Fbid Annual Report as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, our next item of business is declare city council's intent to levy the Fortuna Business Improvement District's assessment for fiscal year 2023-24, Resolution 2023-12. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So this is, again, is a formality, and really what this is, is notifying the public and the potential businesses assessed for the Fortuna Business Improvement District assessment, that the city plans to continue levying the assessment for the next year, and to notify them of a public hearing where if they want to protest that, or if they want to provide comments, this is a formal step to let the public know that this is happening and set a public hearing date. And the recommended date is June 5, 2023, at our first council meeting in June. And there's a summary, again, of how the Fortuna Business Improvement District was founded under the Streets and Highway Code, and I'll just go through a few of the items. The resolution of intent must be adopted after the council reviews and approves the Fbid Annual Report, which we just did, which the Streets and Highway Code dictates that the annual resolution must do the following things: declare the intention of the city council to change the boundaries of the parking improvement area or any benefit zone within the area if there's a proposed change. And there is no proposed change that the council is being recommended. Declare the intention of the city council to levy and collect assessments within the parking and improvement area for the fiscal year stated in the resolution. Again, we're not proposing any changes to the assessment that will be levied, so that would be the same for the next fiscal year. Generally describe the proposed improvements and activities authorized by the ordinance, so that will be included. Refer to the parking and business improvement area by name and indicate the location of the area. Refer to the report on file with the clerk for a full detailed description of the improvement activity, so those are available with our city clerk. Fix a time and place for the public hearing to be held by the city council on the levy of the proposed assessment for that fiscal year. Again, we're recommending June 5. And then state that the public hearing, at the public hearing, written and oral protest may be made. So the important thing is to let people know that at that hearing, they have the ability to submit written or oral protest. In the financial impact section, there is a breakdown of what would be collected by the assessment. And in the fiscal impact analysis, really, the only difference, that is if the city council does not adopt the resolution, the annual assessment would not be authorized, resulting in the loss of the assessment revenue in the amount of $63,000. And again, so the council, last year, again, when Fbid was in a transition away from the nonprofit corporation, that it used to be the council, that we heard from the public in the business community, they wanted to see this assessment continue. They felt like it was in the best interest. We spent a lot of time going back and forth about what we should do. We finally got to the point where the city took this in in-house, and so in order for us to continue this effort, which really just got going in earnest after we brought on our own administrator, we'll have to levy that assessment at the next council meeting. So with that, the recommended action is to adopt Resolution 2023-12.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Nope. Seeing none, we'll open public comment. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-12 and read by title only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
It's a roll call.
Oh, it is?
Sorry, didn't see that.
That's okay.
Resolution 2023-12, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna declaring its intention to levy an annual assessment for 2023, 2024 fiscal year for the Fortuna Business Improvement District, and fixing the time and place of a public meeting and a public hearing thereon and giving notice thereof. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, our last item of business is...
Two more.
No, this isn't our last item. See, I lost my place here. Okay, authorization to award a construction contract for the 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project CPI 9102 to RAO Construction and establish a maximum contract amount of $1,030,000. Staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'll be giving the staff report for this item this evening. And as I get online here, I'm just going to share a PowerPoint, so bear with me for one moment. Excellent. Okay, so yes, I'm here this evening to talk about the 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project. I'll talk a little bit more about what the project components are here in a moment, but ultimately, the topic of discussion this evening is that staff is recommending that the council authorize a construction contract to be awarded to RAO Construction. So beginning with a little bit of an overview of the project, I believe this is the third time the council has seen this specific project, the first one being the authorization to submit a grant to the State Water Board Prop 1 program in order to pursue construction funding for the project, and the second being the award of a professional services contract with our engineer of record, GHD. So the project itself would include installing about 1,000 linear feet of new storm drain pipe along 12th Street in between I and K Streets specifically, in addition to installing 15 new LID rain garden clusters along 12th Street in between Lonnie Drive and K Street, in addition to installing one very large LID along the Southern High School parking lot, for which we've been working collaboratively with the high school on that. The LID rain gardens in principle are kind of shown in the concept in the slide on the lower left. They'd be little bulb outs primarily located in red curb areas along 12th Street, with the exception of the one located in the high school parking lot. And they'd be vegetated with native grasses and plants, things like you see at the ones in front of City Hall. And their purpose would really be to take in all the storm water that flows down 12th Street currently, get it into a rain garden to help kind of remove some of the pollutants and trash that flows down the gutters frequently, and then also to allow for that storm water that enters the basin to get into a new catch basin inlet and ultimately into the underground system. So with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the reasons why staff pursued a grant for this project and what some of the benefits are that, you know, are maybe the more obvious ones in a stormwater project, in addition to what some of the ancillary benefits are. So as I mentioned, having the storm drain rain gardens located along the street will, you know, accept the stormwater runoff that currently flows down the gutters and put them into a vegetated space. This will allow the water to filter through the plants and the media. It'll help remove trash, you know, grit, sand, other pollutants that are running down the street, in addition to hydrocarbons that come off the road. And bringing them into the rain gardens with the new storm drain pipe will make it so right now both gutters, for all intents and purposes, flow like a river, because we don't have any storm drain system up in that area. It'll help get water off the road faster, which will help keep parking lanes clear, other areas clear, crosswalks clear of excessive runoff, you know, when it's really pounding outside with rain. Lastly, the basins themselves, the rain gardens will have some storage within them, so some excess runoff can be stored in that area. That's really important to help mitigate impacts that happen downstream. You know, if you have a big storm and water can just go right to the creek, you know, that promotes erosion, it promotes flooding, it promotes other habitat issues that can happen. Having some storage higher upstream in the watershed helps alleviate some of those impacts. Last two benefits are a little bit different than your standard stormwater ones. As you saw in the slide before, the rain gardens are kind of like these little bulb outs that'll, you know, be located in red curb areas. So where that interfaces with intersections primarily at J Street and K Street, it'll allow for the crosswalk and specifically the corner ramps in those areas to come a little bit further out into the parking lane. Ultimately, that'll reduce the crossing distances at those crosswalks where the high schoolers are frequently by eight to 10 feet as they go from one side of the street to another. So ultimately, it reduces the amount of time that somebody crossing the street could potentially be in conflict with a vehicle and making it safer. Lastly, you know, rain gardens will help kind of break up the space out there, provide a little bit of a visual aesthetic. Hopefully, a lot of the grasses, things like that, that get planted in them will complement, you know, some of the beautiful work that was done at Creations or some of the landscaping work done at Paul's, and really kind of provide a little more of a visual aesthetic or an entryway coming up 12th Street into Fortuna. So moving over to a project timeline, in February of 2021 is when the city was notified from the State Water Board that we were successful and we received the grant to design and construct the project. And over about the next 12 to 14 months, thanks to COVID delays, we were able to finally get under a contract with the state, or I should say, a grant agreement. So in May 2022, almost a year ago to the day, we were able to get under contract with our engineer of record, who is GHD. And over the past six to eight months, we've been working with them in order to develop the project design, perform some utility potholing, and find potential project constraints, and ultimately bid the project. So we finalized the design in January of this year, and at that time, we bid the project, and we had a bid opening here, actually, in the council chambers on March 16, 2023, at which time we received four bids for the project. And the apparent low bid at the time was RAO Construction, as you'll see here in the red box I just brought up, with a total bid price of about $1.1 million, including all bid alternates. We did review the bids. They're fully responsive, including RAO's bid. All of their contractor and subcontractor licenses are up to date, and they have also done a number of projects for us in Fortuna over the recent number of years. I know they worked some on Jamison Creek and the Safe Routes to School project and many others, including the Ronerville Road project, too, I believe. So they're well-versed in this type of work, and I believe they'll do a good job at delivering this project for the city. So I have two slides here on the financial impact. The first one's all words, the second one's all numbers, so excuse the dichotomy there. But for being a relatively straightforward project, it kind of has an interesting story from a financial perspective, so I thought it would be helpful to kind of walk you through the various aspects that are currently funding the project. So overall, 90% of the project is being funded by that State Water Resources Control Board Prop 1 grant, with a 10% city local match coming primarily from Measure E. So what staff are proposing to do based on the bid received by RAO is to award the base bid plus bid alternate 1, which would be a total amount, as shown on bullet 3 there, of about $934,000. There is a bid alternate 2 that was included. We have no intention of pursuing or awarding that alternate at this time. During the bid period, we found some constraints out on 12th Street that wouldn't allow for that to reasonably be constructed in the first place. So that's why we're not considering it anymore. So right now, that brings us to a, the unfortunate thing that we came after the bids were opened, which is that the $934,000 required to award the project was about $80,000 over the budget that we had available from the grant. And this is something that has been kind of interesting because a lot of these grants were put together in 2020 and 2021, when the budgets are developed and the concept designs are developed. And of course, the aggressive inflation that has happened over the years since then has actually created a circumstance where not just the city, but a lot of people who were awarded Prop 1 stormwater money are finding themselves 10%, 20%, 30% underfunded for these projects. So fortunately, we're one of the first ones in the queue to actually go to bidding and construction, and we've been in close coordination with the granting agency, who did indicate that they had a pot of money available that could fund project shortfalls like this on a first-come, first-served basis. So we were able to make a request to augment the funding up to the bid and up to the base bid amount plus the bid alternate that we intend to award. So at this point, we have full funding from the grant and our already established local match to award the project as bid currently. I will note that the board did indicate they don't provide any funding for construction contingencies just to deliver the project as it's been bid on. That being said, they did indicate that if we, you know, provide a local match and we do need to expend any of that as a construction contingency, the additional funding that is still available is on a first-come, first-served basis, so we'd likely be able to recoup whatever local funds we did spend on that. So with that, we are proposing to allocate $95,000 of our storm drain maintenance funding to act as a construction contingency. That fund is approximately $270,000, and it's more than enough that could carry the funding here. And like I said, there's a reasonably good chance that we'd be reimbursed, you know, 90 cents on the dollar for any expenditures that we did incur. So going to the numerical portion of it all, we have four basic funds that are coming ultimately to our recommended contract not-to-exceed amount. The first is our original Prop 1 grant construction funding, about $855,000. And then the two that we've recently added to that is our augmentation to the Measure E local match, which was able to become available because we were allowed to use some staff time to offset some of the other costs that we had previously incurred, which freed up some additional money. So that was money that was already available, that we were able to allocate at, you know, no additional cost to any funds or anything like that. Then we were able to receive approximately $72,000 in additional funding from the state, which brought us up, again, to that contract amount that we had seen previously on the slide. Throw in there the construction contingency of $95,000, and with that, staff would recommend awarding a contract for RAO up to but not to exceed $1,030,000, which would include the contract to be awarded plus the contingency. So moving on to next steps for the project, as we move closer to construction, first, I have some bulleted items here for the city. Assuming that the council authorizes the order of the contract this evening, we would work immediately to put together the notice of award and send out the contract and bonding requirements. We'd anticipate being under contract with RAO in the coming weeks, and at that time, we'd hold a pre-construction meeting with them and really understand their schedule and how they want to phase the project and, you know, do notifications, things of that nature. In parallel, I've been speaking with some of our staff, and we're really going to spend a lot of time early this month doing some outreach to folks along 12th Street. We have been working collaboratively with the high school. We've spoken to a number of property owners, but, you know, we kind of want to go door-to-door to some businesses in the stretch and some folks that are going to have, you know, the rain gardens kind of near intersections at their homes, and just make sure they're aware of the project and the timeline and some of the temporary inconveniences that are inherent to construction. Fortunately, it should be astronomically less than a few years ago when we had the undergrounding project and the light poles and, you know, that whole thing that took an eternity. This will be much lower impact than that, hopefully, so. And then lastly, we are anticipating that RAO will mobilize in about a month's time, and that they will be generally present on the site through at least September. They work pretty quick. They work pretty quick, and we would hope that they could get most things done by August, certainly anything in and around the high school to the extent possible, because that's when the high school is, you know, is in break, is in between June and August. And we have been working collaboratively with the district staff and the principal and superintendent to make sure they're aware of our timeline and we're aware of, you know, when we need to be out of their parking lot, things of that nature. I do have an additional bullet blow on utility companies. So, as we moved through the design phase, we went out and we did a number of utility potholes because installing a new piece of underground infrastructure, the number-one thing you're looking for is what's already there that might be in the way. Unfortunately, we did find a number of underground conduits in the 12th and K area that were recently installed for the PG&E Rule 20A project that happened a few years ago. We've been working with AT&amp;T, Suddenlink, who is now Optimum, and PG&E to resolve those conflicts for about the last eight or nine months now, and we're hopeful that, you know, between now and the next few months that they can, you know, mobilize their subcontractors to get out there and remove or abandon those conflicts. You know, we're working positively with each and every one of them, and our hope is that they can start in the north and take care of their conflicts, we can start in the south in the high school parking lot area, and by the time we get up there, they're out of our way and we can complete the project. So, long story short, there will be some additional contractors out there, all representing those various utility companies, so not everything that is seen out there is a result of the city's contract with RAO, but it is a result of the greater project itself. So, lastly, I'll just end here with my staff recommendation, which is that the council authorized the city manager to award the 12th Street Integrated Stormwater Project to RAO Construction and establish a maximum contract not to exceed amount of $1,030,000. And with that, I am more than happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from staff or from council?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you had an opportunity to begin the discussion of special event month? Not week, month.
Yes, that's a great question. Our general services superintendent and I actually started talking about that last week, so I've asked him to sit down and work with me and to make a plan. That would be included in the outreach we're talking about, you know, because obviously a lot of, you know, things will be moving in and out of that area through the months of July specifically, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
With regard to the rain gardens themselves, are there parking spaces that we will be losing, and if so, how many?
I don't believe we'll be losing any parking spaces. I actually was looking over that again here relatively recently as we've been laying some things out. I would say that most everything located in 12th Street is an existing red-curved area. I believe there's one or two or maybe three areas where there's rain gardens where we would extend red curb maybe four or five feet beyond that to install the rain garden itself. They're all in areas that wouldn't eliminate a parking spot, it would just move the parking spot a little further away, and realistically, most of those areas are actually at the intersections of 12th and K or 12th and J in spots where the red curb should be a little bit longer for safety as it is, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Any others? Open public comment, anybody from the public have any comments? See, and none, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to award 12th Street Stormwater Enhancement Project CIP 9101 to RAO Construction and establish a maximum contract amount of $1,030,000.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, moving to our last item of business is a public hearing, second reading, and adoption of amendment title 15 Building and Construction of the Fortuna Municipal Code by adding Chapter 15.49 Model Water Efficiency/ Efficient Landscape Ordinance. We have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So, this is a second reading, Liz Shori presented this at her last meeting, at the previous council meeting, so we're not going to, we don't have a formal presentation, but just very briefly, the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance is a California state regulation, which has become part of the building code and is designed to prevent water from being wasted on irrigated landscapes. The Model Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance establishes a structure for planning, design, installing, maintaining, and managing water-efficient landscapes and new construction rehabilitated landscaping. Overall, the ordinance seeks to ensure that landscapes promote water efficiency, soil health, stormwater management, and erosion control. And so, again, this is a state mandate, we've already been implementing this because we've been required to. This is a formal step that adopts the state's model ordinance into the city's municipal code. And so, again, I'm not going to go through the entirety of the presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions regarding...
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, and open public comment, any comments from the public? See, and then we'll close that. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to hold the second reading and read by title only, Adopt Ordinance 2023-759.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Ordinance 2023-759, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adding Chapter 15.49 to Title 15 of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
We have city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So, first, coming up, actually noticing a change in my staff report, our next city council meeting will be a special budget meeting, that'll be at 9:00 AM this coming Monday at City Hall. Then, our next regular city council meeting will be on May 15th, and then following that on June 5th at the normal time and place. Our next planning commission meeting will be on Tuesday, May 9th, and again, we did cancel the last meeting, there wasn't a lot of items, but this meeting will be held. We do have items on that agenda that will need to be considered. Our next Measure E meeting is not until September 19th. The next Roner Community Recreation Park District is on May 3rd later this week at 2:30 PM at the city council chambers, and then the next Business Improvement District meeting, there's two of them I want to report, one of them will be on Tuesday, May 17th at 8:30 PM. That's not supposed to be 8:30 AM. Let me check the time, I think it's 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock at the River Lodge, and really, one of the things that we want to present at that meeting is, since Morgan, our new F-Bid administrator, has had a chance to be around for a number of the events that happened, we want to really go through those events, think about, you know, what's the bang for the buck that the city's getting, you know, which events really have a good turnout, which, how can we improve the events that we're having, you know, should we continue to do all the events that we have in the past? And so, that discussion is at an evening time at the River Lodge so that we could get input from our businesses outside of normal work hours. And then, the next regular F-Bid meeting will be on Tuesday, May 23rd, and again, that's the third Tuesday of the month at 8:30 AM. So, just a few items to report, I did go meet in with HCOG last week, they're getting a very early start on the regional housing needs assessment numbers, those are the numbers that the, you know, the state mandates that the regional transportation planning agencies determine how much housing is required. They're really getting an early approach in the past, it's really been a fast process, and those numbers aren't due until 2027, but HCOG is really pulling together a lot of different planners from all the cities in the county and trying to get an early start and look at that and try to approach it in a way that makes sense well ahead of time. We're continuing to work on the regional food recovery effort that's being led by the county, this is something that has been brought to the council before, the county put out an RFP for Food Recovery Organization Manager, so we conducted interviews for that last week, the county's currently in negotiations, we're really thrilled, there's a company that I think would do a great job, and they would actually be the food recovery organization. So, they would help build capacity on the private side with food generators and then food distributors, so getting the food from where it would normally be wasted to people who could use it, they would kind of be the middle person, they would track a lot of that, and then they'd report back to the county and the other agencies and give us the documentation that we need for SB 1383. So, they really, you know, I'm excited about the prospect of that, the firm that we're working to contract with really, they really stood out in that this is their mission to be able to build that capacity and really make that happen in communities that are large and small, so it'll be interesting to see how that moves forward, and it's a new paradigm for a lot of businesses, restaurants, grocery stores, those that have that food generation, but some real opportunities to put that food to good use in our community. And, you know, there's, again, you know, one of the opportunities I was thinking about, I was talking to representatives from the Fortuna Senior Center, and they routinely will collect food that's left from River Lodge events or other events, and how can we get them into the fold to, you know, capture food that is generated in Fortuna that might normally be wasted and get those to folks in need? So, it's not just this great idea at the state level, I think there's going to be some real benefits from people in the city of Fortuna, so I'm excited to see some of that food go to good use and be used in our local community, so I'll keep you posted on that as it moves forward. And then, another thing that Chief Day and I are working on is how to spend some of the opioid settlement funds, we've really been exploring, how can we put that money to good use, and some of the ideas that we're exploring is, you know, can we help people, can we help with some of that money pay for meaningful recovery services? We visited Waterfront Recovery last Friday and really had a good introduction to that organization and saw that they're helping people from all over the north part of the state and that they're a unique type of treatment facility that helps people with addiction, it's a medical treatment facility, so we're considering recommending to the council, maybe we have a deposit there for people who don't qualify for Medi-Cal that need that type of treatment. We're also really concerned about the fentanyl crisis and poisoning, you're going to see some legislation that is, there's been a lot of tug-in war at the state level of different conflicting opioid legislation, but one of the things that we're really concerned about is overdose of, inadvertent overdose of kids who might take this inadvertently or even on purpose, and we really, right now, there's not a great educational program for opioids, and kids are being exposed to this either voluntary or involuntary, and so we want to work with some of the other agencies in the county and see if we can get that information out there and let people know just how dangerous it is. So, those are a couple of the ideas that we're working on, and we'll be bringing those back to council at some point, and again, we want to put those opioid funds to good use, but so far, I think we've received about $50,000, and all said and done, over the next few years, it'll be up to $200,000, so we'll just look how can we really make efficient use of those funds and target them towards the opioid crisis that was generated from the production and distribution of those opioids. So, just one last thing that was kind of good news, one of our grocery stores locally has been paying a fee because they couldn't accept their, you know, bottles and cans for the buyback program, and so they've been paying $100 a day, and they were having a really hard time getting in touch with CalRecycle. So, Mayor Trent, representatives from Assembly Member Wood's office and Senator McGuire's office, as well as the grocery store owner, we met with them last week, and they were having a hard time even communicating with CalRecycle, but CalRecycle showed up on the call, they gave a few different options for compliance, and ultimately, that grocery store was able to submit and get a waiver to allow Hambro Recycling, which we recently permitted to do the buyback, and they don't have to accept it at their store anymore or pay the fine, so they were paying a lot of money for a service that is already here, and so it just didn't make sense, and so I was pleased to be able to work with Mayor Trent to get them out of that requirement and the other grocery stores, and Fortuna for that matter, too. So, we'll see the benefit of having that recycling center locally and it'll take some of the burden off of our grocery stores. With that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. City council reports, we'll start with Councilmember Conley.
I had a redact meeting, it was no loans this month, just a little bit of a presentation, but other than that, it was pretty good. Pretty much, that was it.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I haven't had any meetings since our last council meeting, but I will attend the Roner Community Rec and Park District meeting coming up on Wednesday, and then the 17th, I've got a LAFCO meeting, so I will attend that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley?
Thank you. I attended the Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting last week, as well as the RoboCoast Energy Authority, Merritt covered stuff that we went over in F-Bid. RoboCoast Energy Authority was just pretty much informational, they were gearing up to celebrate their 20th year in business, so a lot of the meeting was spent on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, I mean, Mayor Protam Johnson?
Either way. I've had a HCOG meeting last month, and during which we approved the TDA LTF funding for our fair city, Fortuna, as well as Blue Lake, Riedel, Humboldt County, and approved the funding agreement to keep the Dial-A-Ride services moving, and later on, we approved the overall work program for HCOG, which is a guidance document for projects that will take place and the budget itself, so that's how we operate HCOG. I would like to bring up that we will be having a bike rodeo, Fortuna Parks and Rec will hold one on, I believe it's the 13th of May at Newburgh Park, and then Walker Elementary is also holding a bike rodeo on May 26th, so any parents of Walker Elementary students, you make sure your kids get to ride their bike that day and they can participate in the bike rodeo, and anybody else that wants to can come to the bike rodeo at Newburgh Park, you can check with the park's website for more information on time, but it will be at Newburgh Park. And that's about all I have right now.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say that the canine fundraiser down at the Fire Hall was a big success, it's amazing how many people support those canines, and no, he did, the canine did not help cook the food, but he was there and got to meet some people, so I was happy to be there, and I think Chris showed up there and Mike Losi, and so anyway, it was nice to be able to support them. And by the way, the food was excellent, and they will be doing this again, so don't miss out next time, I had no idea it was going to be so good. And then, I also wanted to welcome Kristen Chamber, the new, her last name is pretty fitting because she's the new Chamber President or CEO, and she's just jumped in and really started doing a good job, so she's got a lot of good ideas, so things are moving along then, and then I also wanted to thank Renee Lindsay for her years of service there and wish her luck in her new adventures. And I think that's about it, and we have baseball to get to now, so.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.